So I'm ready. Do I have to wait for the music and all that?
No music on it, we're good.
We're good? All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the March Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank you for attending this meeting. We have a pretty full agenda today, including a presentation of our FY 2020 audit by John Perry and Company, and we will also have a closed session. Please note there's a change in the agenda from the one you received in your packet. We're moving item number two under Finance and Administrative Operations, Change Order for Legal Services Contract, to after the closed session. We will also be moving item number two under Housing Operations, NRHA COVID-19 Food Distribution and Wellness Program, to under the Executive Director Comments and Recognition. And also a new item, Cowards Square Vaccination Event, and a printout of the revised agenda has been placed at your tables. Before we move on to the agenda, I also want to point out today's format is very similar to what we've done in the past. For public access, if you wish to be recognized, please dial star nine to raise your hand, and you will be called upon by the last four digits of your phone number. If called upon, please state your name and address. Also, I'd like to point out that for the safety of those who attend in person, the staff has installed a CO2 monitor in the boardroom. This was a suggestion by Commissioner Benassi from an article he read in the Virginia Pilot. The article cited Virginia Tech study that found carbon dioxide levels in buildings correlate strongly with airborne spread of an infection, and consequently, CO2 monitors act as a canary in the coal mine, so to speak, to mitigate that coronavirus threat. In addition to installing the CO2 monitor, staff has placed a placard underneath the monitor that lists the indicators for the levels that correspond to the monitor's readings. Also, just a note that Ron has notified me that Phyllis Everett, our longtime executive assistant, has submitted her retirement app notification for April 30th of this year. I and Ron would like to have the board adopt the resolution directing Ron not to accept Phyllis' resignation letter. We can take up the matter in more detail at our next meeting, although I don't know how much that would actually change Phyllis' mind. But it should be clear that we want to express our sincere appreciation for what she's done over the many years of great service to us as commissioners. This is not our last meeting with us, so I'm sure there'll be more to come. With that, I'll now invite commissioners' comments, if any, on the minutes from our February 11th meeting. Any comments?
If they'd be accepted.
All right. We have a motion that they be accepted. Can we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Carnes?
Commissioner Arrington?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Perrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Benassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Chairman Mitrangelo?
Aye.
All right, now let's go ahead and move on to the Executive Director's comments. Now, the Food Distribution and Welfare Program that Eila is going to...
Wellness is the wellness.
Wellness?
Wellness.
Oh, okay. Is on page 133 in your packet, okay? Ron, thank...
Okay, yeah, we wanted to go ahead and bring them, because it doesn't allow... Yeah, ask Eila to bring them in.
Oh, okay, great.
She's going to talk a little bit about the program and the recognitions that I have to talk about, the efforts that NRHA has done throughout the course of the pandemic. One of the first things we did was to make sure that we distributed food to those who were unable to get to. So the second thing I want to talk about is that the vaccination effort that we had on Sunday, just to highlight some of the efforts that we've done during the pandemic.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eila.
Good morning, Eila.
It's a little noisy over here, so everybody...
Oh, hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, look at the troops.
This is harder than it seems, right? Good morning. First and foremost, thank you so much, Mr. Jackson, for this opportunity. Thank you. I have the opportunity this morning to recognize the great work of our team, our youth program team and our youth work experience team. Since August of 2020, this team has packaged, delivered, sorted bags, 450-plus meals every week and distributed them door to door. They have fed over 1,200 youth each week, and now we are distributing food in our midride communities. This is collaboration between our youth program staff, Mrs. Shawna Foller, who pretty much manages and leads, she's the scheduler of the year. Mr. Julius Norman, our youth program manager, you guys know, he's everywhere the youth are. And Mr. Emile Thomas, who is our family self-sufficiency program, and Emile is pretty with NBC in the van, so get out of the way. So each week, we have the opportunity to partner with the region's largest school bank, Coast Bank of Hampton Roads. They, through partnership with the city, help to fund the purchase of really cool, shelf-stable and low-press food options. That was one of our biggest contingencies on this. We didn't want to distribute cans of corn to you. We wanted to make sure that it was food that they could easily prepare and that they would love to eat. So they get some really cool and really good tasty snacks, chocolate milk, juice boxes, cereals, but it's also healthy, too. So each week, the food comes to Cowards, and the staff right here on those pallets of food, they have a well-oiled machine. If you ever have an opportunity to come see it, they're there on Monday. The room looks like nothing happened on Tuesday, because they get it done. They get a package and they get it out the door. So I would like to acknowledge them today, because as of March 8th, as of this Monday, they have received, sorted and distributed over 50 pounds of food through this program.
Fifty pounds?
Fifty pounds. Fifty pounds. Fifty thousand pounds of food through this program. Thank you, guys, for your tireless service and your work through this. I know that this was not an easy undertaking, but we all agree that it was a necessary undertaking. I know that rainy days are challenging. I know that cold days are even challenging, but you guys remain committed. You saw a need and you can do your drive to the occasion. So I have some beautiful certificates of appreciation in honor of your 50,000 pounds of food distributed, 50,000, for your work. This program is contingent on funding, but we hope to provide these meals through June of 2021. If more funding is received and we continue to have the opportunity and the need, we can count on this team making sure that we continue to serve our residents through this campaign. Thank you.
Right.
When I read this report in our packet, we get it in advance, I was so proud of you all. I was so proud of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is kind of the only way to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marcus.
Julius, thank you.
Thank you.
I do think it's very important that you have meals that people actually want. When I was a kid and we did food drives, usually the basket ended up with cans of Brussels sprouts, cans of asparagus, cans of hash, something that we didn't want.
Not that you want, right?
Somebody else wanted it. So I think it's really important to have food that folks actually want to eat. Congratulations, buddy. Great job.
Julius reminded me that this is a bigger team effort. This program has employed 10 youth in total through this work experience program. So this is a small fraction. This is a core fraction. We see them everywhere, but this is definitely a team effort.
One of the things when we talk about, we have a youth volunteer work experience program. So those are youth that's between the ages of 12 to 15, and they're actually too young to go out and get the summer employment opportunities and things like that. And right now, the city may not have those summer employment programs available, but that's important for that group, because that's one of our main things that we do for intervention for that young group, that at that crazy age from middle school age to still that age where they can get into a lot of things. So the food distribution with what we call the youth volunteer work experience allows them to do some community education projects, allows them to do community gardening, and they're the ones, when they get out of their virtual school, they can come out and help us fold the boxes up. They help elderly, they actually take their food in their community to the elderly folks who can't come out and get their food. So it's important that we recognize them, because those are the ones that need opportunities. They're going to need some form of finance in terms of ability to earn some things. So as you're thinking, if there's any possibility that we can look at providing that group with some funding as they come out and volunteer, especially when it's not going to be summer employment opportunities, but some funding that'll help them to earn a few dollars to help their income, so that when they go back to school, they can afford some things.
You have the youth. You have the staff.
Damn power.
We will be looking into that, and I want to thank you all for what you all have done. I hear so much, seen so much, and I thank you.
So tell me your names, you guys. I can't read from here. Alexis, and where do you live?
I live in...
And Young...
I live in Berkeley, at the Menbrock.
Right. Wow. And you, sir?
I'm a dyad, and I live in...
Wow, it's a pleasure to meet you all. I'm smiling.
All right, so let's say keys real quick. Now, let's switch over, or you want to jump in the picture? No? Okay. All right, ready? One, two, three, keys. One, two, three, keys. One, two, three, keys. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Well done, you guys.
Thank you.
So let's adjourn now. It's not like any better than that.
Great. Great to see you, yeah. Okay, Ron?
Yes, one other event that I wanted to highlight that are related to NRHA's efforts during the pandemic, which means, you know, we just saw what we were able to do during the pandemic with the Food Distribution and Wellness Program. This last Sunday, we had a vaccination event at Cowards Square. And it would not have been possible if it had not have been for Eila Smith, who was just up here, and Kim Thomas, who had reached out to DVMS, the Hage Pharmacy, to try to bring together events within one of our communities. And so they were able to come up with working out something at the Cowards Square, which happened on Sunday. So you had DVMS, the director, Cynthia Romero, there were medical students that were there, and like I said, the vaccinations were supplied by the Hage Pharmacy. There was also volunteers from the Hampton PA Medical Center, and like I said, there were medical students, the PA students that were there. And we were able to, within being in that location, we were able to target our residents. Because when I was there, I could see that a number of them were walking from their units to be able to get their first shot of vaccination. But what I wanted to do is also just mention a number of employees that were involved in this. After this, while I mentioned Eila and Kim Thomas, who were pivotal in bringing this event about, but there's Sierra Huff, Lucy Majors, Emile Thomas, Donna Mills, Stephen Robinson, Jen Williams, Steve Morales, Kelly Carring, Julius Norman, Karen Rowe, Pamela Jones Watson. So those were all the employees that were there. They were able to vaccinate at least 1,300 people. That was our, that was the count that we had. I didn't know if we had anything.
Exactly.
Thirteen hundred.
It was actually a little over thousands, but thirteen hundred was how many vaccines they had. But we ended up actually vaccinating a little over, I think it was 1,100.
Okay.
Which, what I was told was that this was one of the largest vaccinations in one day that has been accomplished. It was great.
And this, if you're talking about a small area, you know, we're usually having a larger facility, but that particular area that we were confined in was, it probably was maybe a little smaller than this. So to be able to facilitate the way to get things set up, because there were people out the door, down the sidewalk and things. But they did a really fantastic job of just sort of facilitating that, making sure the number of people that were vaccinated, you know, the people who were there were able to get vaccinated. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Did everybody get vaccinated that wanted to get vaccinated?
Yes.
No. We opened it up, as Mr. Jackson said, to the residents. We advertised it. We've been acquired. So any resident that wanted to, we're still seeing some hesitation from some of our residents about the vaccination.
Yeah.
Because we're working on a campaign to get more information out about the importance of the vaccination.
Right.
So once we opened it up for our residents and staff, it was opened up to the public. And so we had a mix of a number of different people from different areas that came out of things. Just to let you know, on March 5th, Wednesday, I think it's 8th and 9th, we have two days of vaccinations in our midrides. So these are specifically in the midrides for elderly and persons with disabilities, so they can be in the building, get vaccinated, and they don't have to go anywhere. Because that was part of the challenge when getting to the vaccination. And we'll have more information with you on numbers and how that event is...
No, that's the way to do it. I mean, that's the way to do it, is you get sort of herd immunity in that particular area.
That's right.
So that's great.
Right now, we have 175 residents. We have six buildings, six midride buildings, so that number's low in comparison to how many folks. But we do, like I said, when they see people getting the shot, they'll be able to cut down the cost.
Great.
Yeah, but I'd just like to highlight the partnership we have with DVMS. They've been a partner with us right from the beginning. I mean, they were like, I think they provided masks for us and our employees and our residents right from the onset of the pandemic. So we've been, had a really fruitful partnership with them for us. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, that our website, our new website is near completion. The commissioners will be receiving the link sometime this month to be able to view it before it goes live in April. So I just wanted to make sure. Great? And that's all.
Great. Questions, comments for... All right, I'll open it for commissioners' comments. I just sort of have one. Earlier on, Alfonso had suggested that we show a video from Jay Jones...
Yeah.
...who recognized Evelyn Butts as part of an overall talk that he was giving, but really highlighted Evelyn Butts and her commitment to the communities and her work here early on in NRHA. We do have some technical difficulties, so we're not going to be able to show it, but as soon as we work that out, we'll send it out and put it on the webpage so everybody can see it. But it was very good, and again, highlighting the fact of Evelyn Butts and her work. But again, we had hoped to show it, but the electricables got in the way, and they're mad with us or something.
It would be great, though, if we could... I mean, I know that Alfonso sent us the link, and the YouTube link was great, but if we could kind of put that on our website, almost as an archive.
Right.
Because, I mean, you know, she was the first female African-American commissioner.
Right.
So it's a big deal. She paved the way for Rose.
Especially during the time that she served with everything that was going on with the gentrification and things like that. Oh, yeah, we need to know.
Right. Like I said, it was just a problem of hooking it in and all of that. All righty. If there are no other commissioners' comments, then we'll go ahead and move on to the Finance and Administrative Operations.
Good morning, commissioners. This is... Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It's on page 19 in your packet.
Thank you.
Starts on page 19.
Yeah, starts on page 19.
Let me say that one.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Virginia. Thank you.
Yep. Good morning, commissioners. This morning, we have Don Jump with us, who is the managing partner of John Perry and Company. He's here to present a summary report of NRHA's FY 20 financial statements. But before I turn the meeting over to Don, I just wanted to acknowledge Scott and the finance team for ushering the audit through this year. The audit was mostly remote, and they worked hard and they got the job done, so kudos to Scott and the team. Don?
Thank you, Virginia. Can everyone hear me?
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
All right, good morning, all. I believe Jen is going to help me with a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if that's up or not. Can't really see it, but I'll assume it is.
It is.
I did meet with... Thank you. I did meet with the Budget and Finance Committee on Monday, and we reviewed the entire reporting package. So what I'm going to do this morning is just go through this a little bit quicker and then open it up for any questions you might have. So again, if you would go to the next slide, please. This is simply Slide 2, a table of contents, and it's just letting you know what's in this slide package. So I won't dwell on that. There's only 18 slides, and as I said, we'll go through it relatively quickly.
And I think that's...
Next slide, Slide 3, I wanted to...
102?
I wanted to start right off with what I... Okay, I wanted to start out with what I think is the most important aspects of the reporting package, and that is our auditors' reports. And to point out, too, that although there's multiple reports in here, we will talk about each one, I want to point out that all reports were unmodified, meaning that everything meant expectations and, you know, so that's exactly what we want to be, so that's very important. With that, if you go to the next slide, Slide 4, this is an overview of the entire reporting package. You know, the reporting package that you have is over 100 pages long, so it's easier if you can break it down into smaller pieces. So the first piece starts with our auditor's report on financial statements, which we're going to discuss next. And then the second part is management discussion and analysis, which is exactly what it is. Then you have your full detailed financial statements, including all of the pages of the footnotes, and then some required additional reporting, which we'll go over, and then lastly, the supplementary information. So as you look at this overview, probably one of the most important things you could focus on, or the thing that could help you the most, I would say, in just looking at fiscal year 2020, is management discussion and analysis, because that's an opportunity where management basically says, this is what happened in '20, compares it to 2019, gives you the reasons for variations, and pretty much talks about the financial health of the authority going forward. So I just wanted to point that out. Then on the next slide, Slide 5, I think it's important to know who's responsible for what when an audit occurs. So management has a lot of responsibilities, actually, with respect to the audit. So starting out with their responsibilities, management's responsible for the financial statements presentation, including all the footnote disclosures. They're responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control of financial reporting, and then, of course, they're responsible to provide the auditor with access to all persons and provide us with any audit evidence we need and comply with various federal, state laws and regulations, and at the end of the audit, to give us written representations regarding all of this. And then on Slide 6, the next slide, a little continuation of both management responsibilities as well as Finance Committee, and Finance Committee being an extension of the Board responsibilities. So that is to establish a culture of honesty and ethical standards, that is to make sure that the authority's operations comply with the laws and regulations, over and above just the financial aspects, all of the operations, and that the financial statement reporting complies with laws and regs. And then lastly, the responsibility is oversight of the entire reporting process and internal control, and of course, oversight of all of the various programs and controls designed to prevent, deter, detect fraud. So that's two pages of Housing Authority responsibilities. If you get to the next slide, Slide 7, this represents what's the auditor's responsibility. So I want to point out here that we really do two audits. We do an audit of the financial statements themselves, and then we also do an audit on, let's call it a compliance audit. There's two opinions related to it, and the compliance audit is to see that you complied with laws and regulations and governing governmental accounting, and that you established controls to make sure that you complied. And then specifically, the third opinion is that you complied with all of the compliance aspects of the programs that you received from HUD. And we'll talk about that, of course, specifically. But our responsibility is then to express opinions on all these things. And in order to do that, we were required to perform various auditing procedures, looking at evidence and supporting documentation, testing the actual compliance that we spoke about, and testing the internal control of the compliance. And then at the end, it's also our responsibility to communicate all of these matters to the board, which is one of the things we're doing today. So then if you go to the next slide, Slide 8, we approach the audit, we look at areas of significant audit risk, and this will vary from year to year. One of the things that does vary, though, is that there's always the risk of management override, so we perform various tests to make sure that management is not overriding any controls at the top level. Then we determine what areas that we're going to focus on in the audit, and this year, we focused on the HUD grants that you get, component units, both blended component units as well as discrete notes receivable, and then pension and other post-employment benefits liabilities. So those were our focus areas. If we go to Slide number 9, when you get to the financial statement disclosures, it's almost 40 pages of information, and it's all good, so I don't want you to think that you should not look at all of it. But there's a couple of areas, I think, that are maybe perhaps a little more important or stand out a little more than the others, and one is the footnote 1, which really discusses all the different accounting policies that you have. So that's something you should be familiar with. And then a description of component units, again, once again, discrete and blended units, and then the detail of the notes receivable, which is a significant amount of money. And then lastly, there's two footnotes on liabilities, dealing with pension liabilities, footnote 8, and then other post-employment benefits liabilities, footnote 9, and together, that's about an $18 million liability on your financial statements. The next slide, Slide 10, just want to talk about the second auditor's report, which I alluded to before. So this is internal control over financial reporting, and there's, you can potentially have internal control deficiencies, significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. The takeaway here is that, I'm happy to say, there were no deficiencies noted during the course of our audit in this hour. The, the takeaway here is that I'm, I'm happy to say there were no deficiencies noted during the course of our audit in this area. Uh, slide number eleven, uh, is our third r- report and, and, uh, referred to typically as uniform guidance, uh, report. But this is our opinion over the major programs. And it's important to note that you have a lot of different programs. And we're required by governmental auditing standards to rotate our, uh, our selection of those programs each year. So we don't look at every program in great detail every year. What we do over the course of three years, make sure that every program is hit. So this year, our two, uh, major programs were low income public housing and the capital fund. And, and for fiscal year nineteen, we looked at housing choice vouchers, for example. Uh, if you, if you move to, uh, slide twelve, uh, in low income public housing, HUD, HUD determines what compliance areas we're required to audit. And for each program, it's different. So for low income public housing, it was these five areas, uh, that we, that we had to get into and look at the detail and make sure that not only did the authority comply with compliance areas, but the authority had set up appropriate internal controls to assure compliance. And then the next slide, uh, slide thirteen, uh, similar compliance requirements, some slightly different. Again, HUD determines this, not us, and then we look at all the compliance and, uh, uh, perform the. And then on slide fourteen, uh, happy to say once again that we got into the, uh, all of the areas of compliance, internal control of compliance. And we had no material weaknesses, no deficiencies, so it was a very positive, uh, report. So then if you just go to the next slide, slide fifteen, I did want to point out that i- if you recall, in fiscal year nineteen, we did have one finding that related to eligibility as, uh, in the housing choice voucher program. And that was, we selected a sample of sixty items and we had some, we had three out of the sixty that were calculated incorrectly. The, the, the dollar amounts involved were relatively insignificant, but, but it's still a requirement of HUD that we, that we, uh, point out this finding. And, and so that was about five percent of the, of the, uh, sample. This year, as I indicated before, housing choice vouchers was not a major program. But we did, we did take a, a smaller sample and look at it, uh, just to see if, if there were still errors. These errors were still, uh, uh, occurring or if they were all resolved. And we did find two errors out of the twenty. So we had a recommendation, amongst other things, to do a secondary review of, uh, these calculations. Management has a very significant response and it's, it's in your package on, you know, the corrective action plan for last year. And, uh, I just want to point out, I'm not saying that management didn't do this or didn't implement this plan. And if, you know, you recall, the audit lags, so we were really, we really wrapped up the audit, uh, for nineteen back in February. But, but I did, but it's, it's incumbent upon me just to point out that there were still, uh, some errors. And hopefully these, uh, the implementation that management, uh, did will, will result in no errors going forward. So then on slide eighteen, we're almost at the end, I promise. Uh, there's a couple of just additional, uh, communication requirements, uh, and they're listed there and you can see it's all good. The only difficulties we encountered in the, uh, audit process, and Virginia alluded to this, was the fact that we had to do a portion of the audit remotely. Uh, because of COVID. And also, you know, COVID, uh, people would get exposed to COVID and they would have to quarantine for a couple of weeks, so that delayed the process. But, but we were able to come and do, uh, strategically planned onsite visitation for the compliance work. Uh, everybody was very careful. We all, uh, obviously social distanced. We were in a big room with masks and, and, uh, didn't have any fiscal, uh, interaction uh, w- with the authority, because it was all handled, uh, well in advance. So that was all good. And then typically where it says other matters, you know, th- this used to be what was called a management letter. So it was just any comments we might have, uh, just per, you know, uh, things to point out. So if you go to the next slide, slide seventeen, uh, and this is really, the, the, in your package, there's something called a governance letter, you know, and it addresses all the things I said on the first slide, so, slide sixteen. And then there, there's a couple of small things we just, just pointed out for your, your consideration. That is, you do have some projects that use outside third-party managing agents. These management agents provide really good, really detailed monthly reports. They compare budget to actual, they supply all the supporting documentation behind it. Uh, h- h- however, the agent itself doesn't really have a third party come in and review their controls. Not that this is required, but, but some entities like this do this. So we were recommending that you might consider reviewing some of those controls yourself to make sure that the, the data you're getting is, is valid. Uh, and/or examining some of the details on a test basis. Uh, additionally, the central office cost center is something that has to be set up and, uh, according to HUD. Uh, and the level of detail is totally, uh, decided by the authority. We, we think the level of detail here is greater than most authorities we've looked at. Uh, this can increase some time and possibly, uh, increase the possibility of errors. So we just wanted you to take a look at it from a perspective of the, the cost benefit. Uh, are you getting, are you getting out of it what you, you would hope to get out of it? And if you are, fine. And if you're not, maybe you can, you can reduce that level of detail. And then, and then lastly, because of COVID, there were a very, there were a few missing documents in, uh, low income public housing. They were mostly just things that the tenant would have to come in and sign, like privacy notices. It, very minor, we did not consider it a finding and we, we really chalked it up to, uh, the restraints of, of COVID. And then the very last slide, uh, just to point out to you that, you know, uh, governmental accounting standards forge is always coming up with new accounting pronouncements. And these are the ones on the, on the horizon right now. Uh, there's only two there, uh, eighty-nine and ninety that will be impacted in fiscal year twenty-one. You can see when the others will be, uh, I don't, I don't, uh, envision, uh, it has to be eighty-nine or ninety to, to have any significant impact on the authority. We've not really considered the impact of, of, of the other, uh, staples. I just wanted to point them out. Uh, that really concludes my presentation. Before I ask for questions, I just want to echo what Virginia said before. And that, uh, Scott and his staff, as well as, uh, many other members of the authority that, that really handle these programs that we, that we selected, were, were terrific. And the fact that we had to do things remotely, uh, they were great, uh, they handled themselves very professionally and they helped us get through this audit. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll open up any questions you might have.
Uh, questions, Commissioners? Uh, okay. Uh, none from this side. Joe, you got any?
None on my side.
Okay. Uh, now, uh, again, hopefully, uh, Virginia, do you have some comments?
Uh, no, not regarding the audit.
Okay. Uh, well, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, appreciate the work. Uh, and, uh, we'll see you next year.
Okay, you're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Good, good to hear that no issues.
This, this has been a good transition with this, this guy. This guy's learning curve is real flat. He is, he's really doing a good job.
Yeah. And again, I think the recommendations they made are things that are sort of doable.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think those are. With the, uh, I know with the files and maybe to do that, you know, just make sure that that's not a repeat finding. I know it, you know, we're almost through with that particular fiscal year, but, you know, we, we need to make sure that we all, you know, we do a better job with the, the rent calculation. And we don't see that as a repeat finding.
Okay. Good. Uh, all right, then we'll move on to the next, which is, uh, previous month's activities, which starts on page one twenty-two of your packet. Accounts receivable.
Good, good morning. This is Virginia. I did want to point out that there was one notable item on the Commissioner's monthly contract report. If you can see that we have a, issued a contract over a hundred thousand dollars for the demolition of Tidewater one B and C. And it was issued in the amount of one point three million dollars. If you look on the next page, you can see the, um, different, uh, bids that we received. So I did want to bring that to the board's attention. Um, that's really the most noteworthy item in our, in my reports. I know, uh, Donna always talks about the receivables. Um, the cash reported looks good. Our money's flowing. We don't have an issue with that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on my stuff.
Okay. What, what happened to the East Coast abatement? They seem to be cheaper.
Um, Kathy?
A lot of times it comes down to who has the right equipment to do it.
No, I'm just saying.
What, what page is that on?
Uh, one twenty-three.
Kathy, are you on the line or Steve? I wasn't. Hey, hi Kathy.
Kathy, sorry, just, I mean, Kathy Mowgli, please, I'll star nine, so I can open your line, please.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as Dick said, a lot of times I can do it this cheap, because I don't have the stuff to do it. Yeah.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the little dinner in this state.
Okay.
Uh, but the others, um, especially Maxim and the East Coast are, are well-known.
Kathy?
I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, we had a question about the East Coast abatement. Seemed to be low. And just a question about.
Might have been responsible.
May not have been responsive. You had the equipment. Would, you recall any of that? Or a misprint?
Um, yeah, they weren't, they were low, but I was not involved in the conversation between Nat or Rob and East Coast.
Okay.
Um, I, I felt that they were extremely low. You know, there was one point seven on the table. Um, however, in discussion with Nat, he felt like the, the price was fair and reasonable and it entailed everything that it needed to entail. I didn't hear anything after that. And then it was awarded. At that price, I think one point three.
Right. Okay.
We can circle back with Nat and.
Yeah, but I didn't have any.
A little bit more in detail.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was the, the low bid was that the actual, but the reward was, went to the low.
Well, it's fine, just, just a note.
Yeah, we'll check that out.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't look like the appeal, so.
Yeah.
You know. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome. You're welcome.
They're whatever, twenty-five, thirty percent lows, so it, it may have been a wise thing to go off. You know, when you're lack of, uh, that's, I'm ready.
Okay. Any other questions about the month's activities? How about the accounts receivable? You know, that's me, Donna.
What's that?
I was just saying, the accounts receivable.
Yes, sir.
We have quite a bit of charge-offs. What's the, what's the status?
Uh, so we're gonna start seeing these increases, um, coming. Uh, we've had a number of residents during this quarter that skipped out owing rent, um, because of the moratorium. Uh, I do expect this number to continue to rise, especially if the moratorium expires at the end of this month as it's slated to be. So all of the residents that have moved out, um, the majority of them skipped out of their unit, owing balances. We were able to actually evict two families, one from Grandy Village, uh, one from Tidewater Gardens for non-payment of rent because it fell between the expiration of the, uh, earlier moratorium and the new moratorium with the CDC that went into effect in September.
Okay.
And I, and Mr., uh, Bryant Sanders is gonna give the board an update and a little bit on the agenda on the status of the current delinquency.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um.
I just wanted to follow up on that, that was a misprint.
Oh.
Because I, I got the analysis, they actually, the East Coast bid should have been one million four, four hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty. That's, that's a misprint.
Okay, so. That, that would put it into.
One million four hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty. So this is just a misprint. That's, that's their brain you're working, so they, they had it, but not that.
Okay, good. Thanks for clearing that up. Uh, uh, other comments? All right, then we'll move on.
Can Ron say that number, can Ron say that number one more time? I have one million four hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty. Is that right?
Nine hundred and sixty. Yeah, nine hu-.
Okay, thank you.
One million four hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty.
Thank you, Ben. Uh-huh. Uh, other questions, comments? Then let's go ahead and move on to the development activities report. Page one thirty. Any questions on those? Sales and acquisitions? If not, then we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, Mr. Sanders.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
So on page one thirty, uh, one thirty-two of the fact you can find the agenda, which we're talking about, uh, the risk collection effort and eviction moratorium. So as you all know, we, we're actually coming up on the year, uh, the year with eviction moratorium. But the, uh, the current eviction moratorium has really expired on, on, uh, March thirty-first. And we haven't heard anything from Part Act the website today to see, you know, uh, the new, uh, secretary, uh, the House Secretary has extended. But, uh, I'm sure we'll hear something pretty soon. So since the, um, since the eviction moratorium.
So down just a little bit, Tim, which that you hadn't heard and type of.
Yeah, I mean, I, I looked at, looked on the website just to make sure if, um, anything came out regarding any, you know, any extensions on the eviction moratorium. And thus far, you know, I didn't, uh, made any mention, um, about the eviction moratorium being extended. So sometimes they are last minute for getting, getting information out. So I just wanted to, uh, bring that out. So, but since the, um, since the eviction mor- moratorium went into effect, uh, March twenty-seventh of last year. You know, in our chair, we've concentrated on everything, uh, at the property, you know, to notify residents about the eviction moratorium. Um, the length of balances, um, and the fact that rents are still doing payable. So, you know, we've, we've done that through in- information on the website, uh, letters go out in the newsletters. Uh, by, uh, semi-monthly, letters go out to resident, uh, residents about, you know, rent, when, you know, about the length of rent. And, um, also, and you, you find that on page, uh, uh, um, just find on page one eighty-one of your packet. It's the, the first letter that we know we sent out around the fifteenth of the, uh, fifteenth of the month, um, to residents. Talking about their length of balances, if they have any issues, any concerns about their rent, you know, to notify the property management office, um, regarding any, you know, income changes that need to be done, any loss of income, so we can, we can ensure, you know, you know, that take a year out to reduce any rental balances that they, that they may have. And then, and then we also, again, on the fifteenth, uh, excuse me, on the fifteenth of the month, sent another letter out, uh, after we checked the length of the account. sent another letter out, uh, after we checked the linked with account, uh, to residents. And again, you know, asking them, you know, to notify us coming to the office, you know, let's discuss, you know, uh, what's going on with, with these outstanding balances. Um, not to mention, we also go out knocking on doors, go out, you know, knocking on doors. And, uh, and these efforts, um, that we put in, you know, we've discussed at the Board of Commissioners Safety Committee meeting, and I know one of the, one of the things that was brought up is, you know, the optics that once the eviction moratorium, um, ended. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we keep, have discussions with residents, uh, concerning this very important matter regarding their, um, past due balances. And, and not, not to mention that just, you know, financial counseling being held for those residents that do respond. Uh, stipulation, some residents sign stipulation agreements about the financial situation that they're in and what efforts that we in our chair can help provide them with, you know, um, their recommendations to different financial, um, organizations that they may, uh, can tap into some of their funds to assist with their, uh, with their delinquent rent. Now, there was a, there was a, uh, there was a letter sent out at the request of the, um, Board of Commissioners, uh, Safety Committee. And, 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 um, just to, just again to reiterate to residents about, you know, their rental, um, being delinquent in their rent, and that this is not rent forgiveness about paying their rent. And also during that time, the Virginia, the Virginia, let me get it here, pardon me. So the Virginia Rent Relief Program actually opened up to, uh, residents of public housing and housing choice voucher program. So, um, with the help of Jen, she, she, we put it on the website, they have it on our website, social media. Again, it's in newsletters that go out, uh, monthly, uh, to the resident. And also in the letter to the, uh, uh, to explain to the resident that there is a tool there that they can tap into, uh, to help with their, with their rent. Uh, property managers have been engaged in it. They're aware of it to actually assist, uh, residents, uh, with completing, uh, the application, uh, and providing the documents, um, as needed. And I would say that, uh, at the end of February, uh, we, we sent out 516, uh, letters to residents. Uh, there was a total of about 347,000 dollars outstanding, uh, the length of rent at that time. Uh, so what I did was ran a report as of yesterday, just to, just to see if the, the letter said some type of effect, uh, when we sent out and, um, yeah, to my dismay, it, um, I don't believe it has an effect yet. I'll run the reports later on, uh, this month. But as of yesterday's date, we were at 140, uh, excuse me, 433,000 dollars the money went. Uh, and that totaled about 610, 10 residents, um, at the time that haven't, that haven't paid. And I will, I, I, when the letter went out, I received a number of phone calls from, uh, residents. They wanted to discuss, you know, discuss the letter. And again, to my dismay, unfortunately, these are residents that normally pay. Uh, they may have paid late, um, for the month of February, and that's the letter. The sense is paid. Um, and I checked with property management staff to see, you know, um, do they feel that has the letter had some type of an impact, um, you know, when we sent it out at the end of February, first of March. And so, so far, we haven't seen the impact that we were looking for. But I'm hopeful that, you know, um, it will resonate, uh, with some of the residents and we'll start seeing, um, some, you know, rents being paid. Yes, sir.
Right. Can you see any cause and effect between true financial hardship is different now than 12 months ago with, with these people that are delinquent? Or are these people just reading about forbearance on rent and hopping on the train?
Good question, sir. And I do, uh, like I said, like I told you earlier, you know, we, we will reduce rents of residents, report any change in income. So I haven't seen any, uh, when I called out to the managers and I asked them about certain accounts, especially some of the larger accounts, um, and, and their efforts that they put in. And when they explained to me that they've spoken to, uh, these residents, it's, you know, it's the same thing, you know, either they're paid when they get their, uh, income tax check. Um, where we will receive unemployment. Uh, folks will get these pretty nice unemployment checks for back unemployment. You know, we were hearing things like, um, you know, I have to pay my car note. I've gotta get the tires. I'll pay some when I can. Uh, so I haven't seen where, uh, you know, where, yeah, has, has been a major impact. So some residents have, I think have had the ability to pay, uh, maybe just choose not to. Yes, sir.
Uh, but again, I, I have been getting inquiries from, um, the community. And I've been getting inquiries from some, uh, political people whose constituency, uh, in our community. And, uh, and they, uh, I have been informed that they're saying, uh, that blanket letters were going out to everybody in that community, regardless of if you were behind or not behind, kind of charging the same thing, uh, about, uh, delinquency and, uh, what the consequences were. And, and then to, uh, kind of expound on what Ken asked earlier and, uh, and your response to it there, there didn't seem to be a clear understanding on exactly what was attempting to be addressed through the letter. Is it just rent collection or we're serving notice for, uh, some other objective in this process? And, uh, so, so, so way I'm way I was advocating, we have this mother who said she received notice that she was, uh, I want to say 10,000 dollars or more behind in her rent. And, uh, and that she was not behind in her rent. The rent was current. And that, uh, what they do is a single line item, uh, one of the things, excuse me. I am severely congested, but, uh, one of the things that happened with the, uh, blanket, uh, letters is that everybody kind of gets paid with the same price. And it's like, uh, you know, the, uh, it's a pig that hollers, so to speak. And, uh, I, you know, I don't know if you can, uh, speak to that. Is, is there any motivation to, or is there any, uh, tell me if you know where I'm trying to go. Is there any, uh, logic or reasoning to what I just said? To achieve a broader objective, uh, sending everybody the same notice, you know, even if they weren't delinquent to similar, uh, amounts?
Okay, so let me, let me speak to that. So, and I think the, the particular letter was the last letter that, that went out. So.
And I did get three from, uh, uh, Donna.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was Donna. I don't know if she sent everybody three.
Yes, sir.
She was sending a type of letter than that, graduation of them.
Right, yes, yeah. And you're, and you're actually correct. So outside of these letters, nothing else is being sent to residents. So I think, I think what, what happened in this particular case, because like I said, I received a number of phone calls that the rent was, uh, the rent wasn't paid at the time. The letters were mailed. And then the rent they post, and I explained that to residents that, okay, it was just, you, you, you know, you paid your rent, but the letter already went. So, uh, and it was quite a few, not a, not a whole lot. But I will say that there's no letters, there's no other letters that are being sent to residents by the staff. Just again, if, uh, on the 10th of the month, when they look at the delinquency report, if a family is showing delinquent at the time, then they're sent, they're sent that letter. That's on 181, uh, uh, on page 181. Then they'll look at their reports again on the 15th of the month. And so if you paid between the 10th and 15th, you owe them the letter. But on the 15th, if, if, um, you know, we had to steal any rent, then we'll send that, uh, that second letter. Uh, but no other letter is being sent. Now, sometimes again, the letter may be sent and then you pay, you, you pay the rent and then, but it's already in the mail. So I think that's, I think that's what's happening in this case. And like I, um, alluded to earlier, I mentioned earlier, um, we're just, the letters are in the newsletter and we do post, you know, uh, information on the website just to, you know, just as a reminder to the residents. Because, you know, we don't want, I mean, we want to keep it fresh in, in our residents' mind that, you know, rent is still doing payable, you know. So these, these are the, these are the efforts that we're, that we're attempting to, you know, to do that.
Tell pain is.
I have a question.
Can I, uh, can I, uh, is it okay to follow up with him after the meeting on a particular case?
Yes, sir. Uh, may I have a clarification just so I'm clear for the minute? Uh, just going back to the comment for, um, Vice Chair Albert.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct in understanding for the minute that the letter went to residents only if residents had a balance? However, it is possible that between the time the letter was mailed and the time they received it, they had already taken care of that balance?
Correct.
However, if I never had a past due balance, I would not get a letter.
You would not get a letter, right.
Thank you, sir.
Right. I think Mr. Dill has got a question. Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Chairman. Um, I think this is a great presentation. I had a lot of concerns moving forward with this whole eviction moratorium. Uh, so I, I am, I have looked at it and I think it is great. Um, and my question I have, I think I have a two-pronged question for you, Mr. Sanders. Barring that the President comes in with a, um, executive order to extend the moratorium. Uh, I think 516 residents was, uh, uh, disheartening. But to hear 610 is even more disheartening. Uh, and I see that you guys are doing a great job of trying to get the information out. What could we as commissioners do to assist to make sure that this information is getting out? So when April 1st comes, it, it's not a blanket or a blind side. And, you know, the CARES Act was passed, so there will be a lot of stimulus money out there. And secondly, I think the second part is, uh, for the housing choice voucher, I, I need to ask Suzanne as well, as well as the committee. Could we have a follow-up? Because this is great of what's been happening. But what's, what is April 1st gonna look like for NRHA? What is May 1st gonna look like for NRHA? Like the first 90 days? If this moratorium doesn't go through, are we throwing people out within 15 days of April 1st? Just moving forward with that. Uh, so the first thing I would think that you can answer right now is what can we do as commissioners to help, uh, get this message out? And then the second one, I think it's more so when the HCV meets.
Okay, well, I, uh, thanks for the question, sir. So I think as commissioners, um, I mean, you guys are supporting us in all, all the efforts that we're, that we're, you know, that we're putting in place now. And, um, you know, aside from, you know, I'm not sure if you guys are receiving calls from, you know, constituents or people, you know, um, having issues with, with this. I mean, if they do, you know, have conversations with them, honest conversations about the rent moratorium and, again, their obligations, you know, um, when it comes to paying the rent. Um, but I do want to, I, I do want to, uh, also say that we're, you know, it's not our goal to try to evict families. It's not our goal. So we're gonna look at every avenue that we have, um, you know, talk with families, looking at repayment agreements, um, what, what they possibly have done to keep families in their homes. Uh, and so, and it, and it is gonna require the family to work with us. And, um, so currently right now, you know, we, we have some that, you know, won't acknowledge any letters, any phone calls, any knocking on the doors, door knockers. And so, uh, you know, but again, you know, if, if it does get to that point, you know, we're still gonna use every resource that we have to work with the family, um, to keep them, keep them in, keep them in their house.
That's alw- I'd say that's always been our goal, even with the first, when the first eviction moratorium was put in place and we didn't know if it was gonna be extended. We were prepared and HUD was encouraging the housing authorities, like implement, like repayment programs and other, and they were highlighting sort of best practices for housing authorities in terms of being able to keep residents in, in their, in their homes. So I, I don't think that anything, I don't think that's gonna change. It's just that we, the fact that even if, you know, you have people with larger balances, the thing is that repayment agreements could, the repayment agreements, if they're only allowed a, you know, a year or two, they could be equal to the same amount as the rent. So if you're only allowed a year or two to be able to, to do a repayment agreement. So that's why we're, you know, we're trying to get people to pay as much as they can. So if they do have to enter in a repayment agreement, it won't be as, as much as, as, as the rent. So there's a, you know, we've been trying to encourage, and I don't think it's gonna be, definitely gonna be our, our first act to try to, uh, evict people because we know that the impact that that's gonna be on people. I mean, just under ordinary circumstances, I don't, I could cite all the numerous studies to talk about the, the turmoil of eviction out of assisted house. I mean, that, that's a whole thing in itself where, you know, it, it just puts the family into a whole, whole different level of despair that, you know, you, you, you never see, you'll never see. So that, that's what we don't want to happen. We're supposed to be sort of like the safety net. So we're gonna do everything we can to make sure to, we can keep people in. But if they don't refuse, if they refuse not to, you know, to allow us to help, then, you know, what, I don't know much of anything, you know, we can do. Well, there are churches. I've even spoken with churches that, that are willing to help. We actually have one resident reach out to a, a church. We were able to facilitate uh, them making payments on the resident's behalf. And like Bryant talked about, when, when this assistance first came out for, uh, for, uh, for homeowners and tenants, it wasn't meant for people who are already, already getting assistance. What happened was over time, they saw that people with assistance were being impacted just as much. So they opened it up to allow for people who are receiving assistance to be able to, to get this additional assistance, assistance to pay their back rent. So we're, we're encouraging families to take advantage of these opportunities. And we're gonna.
Be right.
It's almost like people, to not, to not be able to get help throughout and keep your housing, it's almost like you're just gonna have to refuse any assistance. In that, in that case, what options do we have if someone refuses to work with us? I mean, that's what it's gonna, uh, essentially gonna have to come down.
I think Joe had a comment. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up because I, I think from my perspective, from my tone, I hope it's not different. Uh, I think that you guys in our HCA are doing everything you can to prevent this. But in looking at the charge-offs that Donna prepares and what Donna has to do, there are gonna be people that don't respond or non, are non-compliant. I would just think it would behoove us to know what this process will look like based on the people that have paid for COVID and refuse to work with us moving forward. I would just like to know as a commissioner, what does that look like? I mean, I, I know that it's not saying, okay, we're not gonna allow them not to pay rent. That's not the business model. But what, what does that look like moving forward for the eviction?
Okay.
And I agree. I think we can have a, a more in-depth discussion and include people first, staff in a HD, in our Housing Choice Voucher Committee.
You both said, excuse me, repeat that.
I'm not sure. I think we can, I think Joe had a good idea, is that we can have a more in-depth conversation about kind of what, what this looks like in the future in our, um, talking to a voucher committee and also make sure we've got staff from NRHA and staff from People First.
Right.
Say, let's walk through all scenarios. What if, what if, what if? Is that good, Joe?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect.
I fully agree with Joe that we've got, we've got a tidal wave coming at us. And you have some legitimate folks there, a lot of legitimate folks who can't, can't deal with things right now. But you got some other game, you know, you know, this is my way of looking at it. So we gotta find some accountability in here in a way that is fair and yet, you know, uh, we don't let people gain it.
Can, can we?
And here we, well, what a classic. Are we talking to other, uh, housing authorities to see if there are other ways of dealing with this? We've got a whole country full of housing authorities.
Like I said, the HUD has been, in their notifications, they've been highlighting best practices from other housing authorities in terms of what they could do in dealing. So we've been, we have been monitoring, monitoring. We have been monitoring those as far as what we could do and, you know, as far as like the repayment agreement is, is always, it's always been available even under normal circumstances.
But I think it's good for Joe and, you know, for the people first to, to see what. other people have as a solution when that.
Yeah, we can do, yeah, we can do that.
Um, this is not, I know this, this what Joe is talking about and everybody's talking about, but right to me right there, this is something that's got to start being talked about sooner because it's moving fast. But, uh, also.
Rose, did you say that very far again? You said?
Uh, what Joe is talking about and everybody's talking about right then, this is something that's moving fast, real fast, and, uh, April is just around the corner. But I wanna know that if someone's in tire water, they're a family that, or two is in tire water, they haven't paid theirs, that there are problems, they haven't paid theirs and, 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 um, you make a, uh, uh, agreement with them, saying, we give you a year to pay it, and they are way behind on their rent, and they're about to time, their time comes for their hundred and twenty days for them to get a voucher. How are we gonna address that?
That's a good question, because as you well know, you really can't leave one, uh, one program older than others, so, um, and I know that, um, and I'm glad you brought up tire water, because I did get some numbers from them. Uh, but the, the, the property manager, along with staff there, will work out communicating with the group in tire water about these residents, you know, and, and, uh, and the USI group, they're working, you know, they're, um, they're working with the residents, so, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, that we can get, you know, some monies paid down, some monies paid, and that they should be really talking to the families about the importance of, you know, getting this rent paid down as best they can, uh, because it could, you know, it could possibly affect that, if you aren't correct. So, but the conversation is being had, you know. Again, you know, um, the residents just not being deceptive, I, you know, not being deceptive. But I do wanna, uh, uh, what Mr. Gresham brought up about that some people may be gaining, but that was brought up at the Board of, uh, Commissioner Safety Committee meeting. So what I've done was, um, I've had, I've asked the managers to, to go back and look at, um, especially these larger accounts, okay? To look at these larger accounts and look to see if any of these families have been affected in any way by COVID or, you know, and, um, so, so far we're finding out that the majority of these families have not had a loss of income or anything, they're just not paying it, all right? And so, and I wanted to make sure, one of the things I said that at some point, you know, the rubber's gonna meet the road and I wanna, you know, as NRJ, we, we need to say that we've done all we can, we've looked at, we've reached out to these families, and even there's some families that may have, uh, lost some income due to COVID, but, but they had other incomes still coming in. So we reduced the rent, and then there's, there's the thing as well, I lost my job, and we still have to explain to them, well, you still have, your, your rent went from three hundred dollars, but there's lots of the job, to a hundred dollars. So you, you know, so you could pay rent based off the income that you currently have, and we're still having difficulty getting them to pay that.
Do, do we have, this may be a legal question, do we have the ability to tap in, put liens like on tax returns, on earned income tax credits?
You mean, like when, uh, when we write it off?
No, no, I, I mean, when we're, you know, when we have a receivable, can we, can we go toward, to HUD and say, look, you're sending money to this guy, he's not paying his rent? Can we get in the middle of that flow of money? There's gonna be a flood of money coming to, uh, low-income people.
And that's a good question, but I, yeah, I've never heard that.
I know when it's written, I know when it's written off, if we can, like, we can, like you help. But I can't. I know that when the, when the rent is written off, we can, like their tax return, it's like debt set off, we send, we could send it to the state and we can get our money back, but it has, but it's usually money that's been written off, that's the account receivable, but I don't know in active situations, I, 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 I'm not aware.
Delphine?
Right, so, Ron is correct, once we have a fully written-off balance, we get the assistance of the state to get hopefully some of the funds back. In, in practice, it's very difficult to basically lean on residence assets.
Well, and I hate to belabor this, but I, I think it, it kinda, uh, deserved the, uh, attention we're giving it. It, it sounds like I'm hearing us say that there is kind of multiple levels of issues to address with this thing, and we're only looking at this one. And we know that one is coming, but we're only looking at this one. And, and from my perspective, without producing or having any real specificity, my, my, uh, comments are, each one of those things we're not looking at can get you evicted. And so, if we're looking at you've had previous income, wouldn't pay any of it towards the time that you had the income forgiveness, not forgiveness, but forgiveness, don't, don't.
I understand.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and, uh, and so you didn't take advantage of that to the extent that you just assumed that everything was written off, even when you were told it wasn't, and then you get to a scenario whereas it might be some options for you at the end of the line, so to speak, to get some help with the overall balance, but that's gonna be on you to try to make happen, because here is what we're gonna be facing at the end of this moratorium, that we're gonna have to, uh, you know, make some cookies from this over here, because, you know, you, you, you really haven't, uh, done anything to, uh, move the ball down the road, kick the can down the road, moved the needle many at all. And so, each one of those things that have significant impact on each case, uh, has the potential of leading to eviction. And, uh, and so my question, do, at, Ryan, you, uh, your responsibility is over all of the housing managers, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so, my, my thinking is, uh, one, I know that you guys have been, 'cause I talked to Donna about it, I know you guys have been looking at ways to speak to, uh, the residents about, you know, uh, you've been dancing to the music now and the, and the band, the pipers coming up, so have you made provisions? We sent you letters to this, that, and the third, and if there a point, or I guess, uh, your, your supervisor's looking away there, so they don't wanna take this one, but is there, is there a point that says, uh, forget my friends, some hell or high water, y'all getting out of here if you don't have the money?
Okay, so let's, let's, and I, I grapple with this too, and, and I pray that doesn't happen.
I mean, for everybody, is that, does that make sense?
And it does, and it really does, and so.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. And so.
Rose. And, and again, that's why we, and, and like you just alluded to, we, we're sending letters, we're talking, we're knocking on doors, we're trying to, so we're trying to do everything we can to get the resident engaged about the importance of this matter, okay? You know, at some point, what are we gonna, you know, we're gonna have to do this, okay? You know, um, but, again, I, like we said, we talked about repayment agreements, okay? So we don't wanna see families, you know, evicted, but I think, um, as, uh, Mr. Gresham alluded to, families that have been gaining the system the whole time, and there's not many, there's, there's a few, you know, and I think, uh, you mentioned in, in one of our safety committee meetings, do we wanna reward bad behavior? You know, residents that just have the ability to just say, hey, I'm not paying, and then we're gonna go and put them on a repayment agreement, and now when you're looking at balances of maybe five, six thousand dollars and them keeping up with their regular rent, we're gonna be right back, that's a few months down the road, you know, if they don't pay it.
But Brian, if we tear this up, we've got files on every one of these, these folks, and we could probably put another column in there that says, how much money are they gonna get from this, this new, new bill? And it's, it's big. You're gonna have an earned income tax credit money, that's, that's gonna be down the road a little bit, some of that's gonna be paid monthly. You're gonna get fourteen hundred bucks per person, plus fourteen hundred bucks for a kid? There's gonna be a bunch of money coming into the bank after these people in the next two weeks. And you, sir, you're absolutely correct.
Sorry, sir.
No, go ahead, go ahead, if you were answering him.
Okay, so you're absolutely correct, even prior to the, the, the monies coming, the monies that came in before.
Yeah.
Managers have spoke with, residents have, and one that keeps resonating with me, a resident received a nine thousand dollar check.
Right.
Told the manager, but still refused to pay the rent. So didn't pay anything. So, and I, and so, and I do, I'm sorry.
I hate to cut you off, Brian, but I need to know that, um, is there anything wrong with sending out a letter and telling them, because eviction doesn't affect them, that word doesn't affect them.
Yeah, Rose.
The word, the word eviction is not affecting them at all.
Right, yeah.
And I always wondered if it would be, if, is there anything wrong with sending out a letter telling them that, um, your voucher, receiving your voucher will be affected by you not paying your rent? Is there something wrong with that word, wording it like that? Because sometimes it's a certain word that would affect them, receive, not receiving that voucher right at this time, I'm telling you, that means more than that.
And I understand. However, but that won't, that, that won't encompass everyone, because it's not, and I think if you're referring to folks, uh, folks that residents are tied water, that are some of the, well, see, what I'm saying is, there's, there's some folks in public houses that don't, that are.
They're not.
Getting vouchers, so, send them a letter saying, they're gonna be like, well, you know, what you talking about?
Yeah, they don't, not everyone's in public housing that's getting a voucher.
Right.
They're, they're gonna stay in public housing.
That's one of the words I got was, one of them.
No, that's, that's just for.
And they got a letter, saying they.
I, I just think we need to take our language of, you're dancing the dance and the fight is coming, and things like that, and I don't think we're gonna solve it here, and I think we all know.
Well, for some people, they're not gonna do anything until they actually get their eviction note.
Yeah.
And then, and that's what normally happens, it's gonna take them getting that, you know, this is the day, this is when it's gonna come to your place and start to take, and you gotta, you gotta, but that is gonna be given.
Of what a one-year payback is gonna look like on top of their rent.
For some, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be tough. I mean, we all, it's almost like we have to get what it looks like and send it from, this could be you. And then they would see, this is what, this is the latter that you're gonna see.
But, can we, can we take what Rose is saying and kinda put that in content, context? Like, these residents don't understand what eviction means, that's important. I also understand what Ken is saying, like, therefore I said the CARES Act, there's gonna be a lot of money floating out there. It needs to be communicated that, I, what I know if I live in tire water gardens is, you can't pick me out, Mr. Sanders, because my rent, the, you, you, the government has said that I don't have to pay my rent. The whole process, even when it comes to including, you know, I think we just need to, uh, and I don't wanna do us more work, us as commissioners, because I know, like I had to get on social media, communicating the results of not, you know, you getting lump sum of money and failing to do so and going to buy something else can, can devastate you.
Yep.
You know, I, I think, um, one, uh, of the detail, maybe a, um, more, somewhat more aggressive approach to connecting people with the rent relief program rather than just, you know, I know you guys do, but more importantly, if you look at the big picture, I mean, there's probably, we have six hundred of families that are homeless in three weeks. Um, it's not just a, sorry, base problem, it's a, it's a city problem, it's a business problem, it's an education problem, it's a health problem. I, I mean, we, we have partners in, in this, and so let's try to, let's try to engage them to the extent that, I mean, at the end of the day, I think there will be casualties, um, for, you know, but, um, but to Rose's point, you know, you're not eligible, it's gonna affect your voucher, you won't have the right to return to tire water garden or, you know, wherever the, the state home area. Um, and, and so I think we, I think we need to have a, also a pre-starter talk with some of our partners, the People First folks and the, it's faith and the, and the faith community, whatever, but this is, this is the, the, the ramifications of this are, are far greater than, um, you know, than, than NRJ. I, you know, I changed a little bit, and Brian, this is not, you know, about the word optics, you know, I'm not, I don't think we're worried about the optics, I think we're worried about the real-time consequences, and, um, and I think that we're, that, you know, for us optics, as David says, we've done everything we can do, and we try to engage everybody we can engage, um, you know, so, because the, the sad truth is that if things don't happen in, in another, you know, three weeks, you know, the families are, are gonna suffer.
Well, I, I agree, one thing you said in there, I think that you need to identify all the ramifications, somehow none of these, legitimate folks need to be awakened to the, you know, the dancers are getting older, and, you know, it, it, you know, it's gonna have tremendous ramifications unless they grab hold of this talent.
I think you need to send a red letter, a black letter with red letters written on it as a draft, how an eviction look, red letter look, and the consequence of what you're doing.
Get the card, that's the, the audio card.
Yeah, I wanna know.
Somebody tells you.
Any one that see that, and it's a draft, across the three weeks, this is what's gonna look like.
But I think one of the things that's also, we don't wanna lose is that this six hundred residents would join the wave of the people who were put out from the private companies.
That's right.
Right. I mean, they're actually, they're, they're looking, even in New York State, they're predicting eight hundred and fifty thousand people are subject to be put out. That's just in one state.
In the state.
So again, uh, I, I think, to me, the, and I sound like a broken record, at some point, we have to say, despite our efforts, this is the consequence. And I think what we've talked about here is, let's make sure we can say what were those efforts.
Yeah.
And because, I, I think, as Suzanne, as Rose, everyone recognizes, at some point, there will be five columns, six columns of folks, the ones who say, I don't care, do whatever you're big enough to do, all the way down to, it wasn't my fault, I can't, so how much help do you, what do you do? But at some point, we are going to have to say, despite our efforts, this person didn't live up to it, or they've gotta go, and there will be tragedy. I mean, this, this will not be just the folks who got walking around money, wads of hundred dollar bills who say, I'm not paying. This is going to be a, a broad spectrum of issues. So again, I would suggest that we have further conversations about what, despite our efforts. And we, as a board, need to be kept comfortable with being, saying that those efforts were thorough, reasonable, and brought about some results, uh, but there will be folks that they won't bring about those results. So again, uh, because it, this is gonna be caught up in the tsunami of folks in the, not in public housing, not in NRHA, but in, in Norfolk. I mean, this isn't gonna be the only people who are gonna be, have, have their furniture on the street, uh, if this doesn't go forward. Yeah, another moratorium is what I mean, forward. So again, Brian, you got some work to do, dude.
Yes, sir.
This is why you get the extra dollar an hour, baby.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
So we'll look at, again, um, but I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think you know we're concerned.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, the, the six hundred thousand, uh, that.
You just think about what that does to reserves.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to say, it impacts the, I mean, that's not the primary thing, but our operations, that's, that's mine.
That's another, uh, one-third of the dig.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, so.
All right, so, any, any other questions?
Run, Brian.
Thank you.
I think you wanna talk with me later, right? Yeah, okay, I'll be, I'll be thinking about that.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
All right, uh, do we have any, uh, we'll look at the committee notes, uh, which are on page one thirty-seven, one fifty-seven, and one eighty-nine. I know, Donna, you wanted to mention something about the, uh, possibility of meeting in person and the, the challenges with that?
Yes, sir, um, so we had discussed at our last Housing and Safety Committee, Board Committee meeting, that we wanted to return back to meeting on-site. Um, if you remember before COVID, we would rotate our meetings once here, and then the next month, we would be at one of the communities and rotate throughout the communities. Uh, we had talked about trying to start that this month in Young Terrace being the first location. Unfortunately, uh, because of technical challenges, we are not gonna be able to do that for the March meeting. However, we are continuing to work on that and, and determining if we can set up the capabilities to do both the onsite and virtual meeting, uh, in Young Terrace in the month of April. So the March meeting will be back here at nine-thirty, um, I believe that's on the twenty, sorry, twenty-second of, uh, March. And then we will again look at hopefully being out in the community in April.
Okay, thank you. Other comments about committees? Any, okay?
I just have one, uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was wondering if it was okay, uh, Delphine to bring it up here, uh, but, uh, either my interpretation of our role as related to the committee meetings is a little unclear in my mind now, or, uh, or, uh, the committed understanding of what our role and involvement is, has gotten a little skewer in how they are, uh, uh, plays out in the mind of all of our selectives. And I guess I'm saying that because I know several committee members, Suzanne, Ken, Joe, spent an awful lot of time working with committees, uh, and, and meeting with committees, and, uh, and, and I was assuming that, uh, our role has less to do with, uh, our work with the committee, uh, was limited in what our input should be, and our work seems to be now more geared towards just listening. And not providing any direct comments that might be interpreted as a directive. That's, I mean, it's not clear.
I'm sorry, I.
Let me try to unpack it a little better. I come to a finance committee meeting, and the chair says, uh, that, uh, he wants to implement, the chair, I mean, executive director, not, not chair of finance committee. He wants to implement a policy where as, uh, ten percent of our annual audit budget should be reduced and go to small business development. And he's gonna push to have that put in. And I say, yes, Mr. Chair, I say, no, uh, you, you, you don't do that. Now, that directing the staff, even though he's the ED, let's say it was not the ED, but the second-tier, uh, chief. Now we get into the area of the board instructing the staff so that the staff come back to the board and says, well, we wanted to do so-and-so, but Chairman Bernasti said not to. And, uh, we didn't agree with that, but we were directed to not do it based on the, the, uh, board, the commissioner. And so we didn't do it. Now, we're getting into the area where as it's perceived that the, uh, and I'm trying to find an extreme example, just, just kinda help you all see where I'm trying to go. And I guess if I were to try to unpack it a little better, I would say, uh, is our role just to go to the committee meeting and listen? Or say, yeah, I like that idea, and leave it at that? Or I don't like that idea? Or should we have substantive, uh, insightful or experienced, uh, comments based on our background, life experiences, professional experiences, and that kind of thing?
Commissioner Albert, I know you had, uh.
Or should we just shut up and drill?
You had asked, you had asked me, you had, I think we had that conversation a couple of months ago.
That's right.
One of the things that, that I'm doing, and, uh, and Jen has helped me out, is we're actually trying to come up with a, like, a commissioner's, like, a reference book to sort of help.
The dudes in that, the dudes in those, the commission service.
Sort of help define what the, what the committees are for. And I mean, it would be with your info, but I think it would sort of help frame what the committees are for a little better, because you did, you did raise that question with me, so that's gonna be a part of what we're hoping to have. We're talking about maybe in sometime in June that we'd have, actually have something. I mean, you were talking about roles and responsibilities for the commissioners and the executive director, things like that, that you all would have a look at, and, and that would be the opportunity to sort of, sort of define the, the committees a, a little bit better. That way, everybody can understand what the fun, what the function of the committees are and what the roles of the commissioners are. And that's what I was hoping would be part of the.
And Ron, it, it, um, it's an offer which, uh, you can make up or not make up, and I'm fine. I'm happy to help with that.
Okay.
I mean, this is what I do.
Okay.
Week in and week out, it's talking about, it's what a board does, and this is what management does.
Yes, we'll do, we'll do that.
And this is a really, I mean, very, uh, substantive, if you use the word, conversation that happens in boards and commissions everywhere. I think that, you know, if, if you wanna be helping the board, sometimes those boundaries get confused. Um, sometimes, you know, the best intentions, you end up, you know, not doing what you should or what. So that clarity, um, I think it's really helpful, and if there's something I can do to help with that effort, please reach out.
That's, that's at committee level.
Yes.
Especially, Johnny, because you have management and commissioners, a board overlapping, and.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do want, on a committee, to use the best expertise you have there, um, you know, and.
Are we directive, are we directive in that point? And, you know, we're not acting as a full board, we're acting as an individual, who are the board members?
Yeah, so I'd be glad to, if that, if that helps.
And that's what we're, that's what I'm hoping that you'll be able to see, and it even talks about the things that your role in commissioners, what things that should be important to you in terms of, like, your fiduciary responsibilities, policies, and those kind of things. And part of it is the book that you gave me, the last, the book that you gave me, the last board meeting.
Uh-huh.
That's, we're gonna incorporate some of that into this management.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's move forward on that, because again, there is, there's always this thing, was it, was it an opinion? Was it a suggestion? Was it an order?
Yeah.
And again, I, I, I tell people, it's not what you say, it's what they hear. And so we, again, if you can, uh, sort of put that out in some systematic way, I think that will clear up some of the, uh, frustrations that are on both sides about, I just made a suggestion, they thought it was an order, you know.
Okay, good.
Is he telling us what to do? I thought we worked for Ron, you know, that kind of thing, so. Yes, if you can do that, the quicker the better.
Now, definitely reach out with Suzanne to be a part of it.
The quicker, the better.
Yes.
Okay. Can I say that again? Okay. Thank you. And, and other comments? All right, then, I, uh, new business, do we have any on, on the line who wishes to speak? Jen, if you could check.
Can you please provide the problem? To the judge, star nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you want me to do it? Oh, I got you. Um, there's a member of the public who wishes to speak, please dial star nine to raise your hand, and you will be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. If you are called upon, uh, please state your name and address.
Would you have a caller?
All right.
Caller, eight, and two, eight, four, four, your line is unmuted, please tell. Can't you, I'm sorry, can you please repeat yourself? Can you please state your name?
My name is Kyle Wilson, I live in Franklin Arm.
Oh, Kyle, yeah, hello.
I just need to get the ID number or password, so that I can, uh, next time I'm borrowing somebody's phone, I can use my laptop. Like, um, provide the information.
Okay, you're looking to communicate some more, that within? Kyle, what, what do you need from us?
I try to go to the go, the go meeting. The ID and, and, uh, password to go, to log into the go-to-go meeting.
The go-to meeting? The go-to meeting?
Okay.
Um, yes, Ms. Wilson, this is Jen Moore, Communications Director. The best way to access the go-to meeting is to go to our website, www.nrh.a.us. And under the Board of Commissioners tab, there is a link that will directly take you to the go-to meeting panel.
But I still need, in order to join it, I need a password and an ID. Someone send that to me via, um.
I understand, okay, so what I'll do, Ms. Wilson, is I have your phone number, I will call you back today and, uh, chat with you one-on-one to, to address the, uh, the problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, again, technology has its own thing. Do we have anyone else?
No other questions, but I will take the lobby as well.
Yes, please do.
This is Chairman, I don't know if this fits on a new business, and probably should have been a commissioner's comment.
Go ahead.
But is there any way of, you know, back when this Bill Sully was the chairman, we had four slides, that's all we were allowed. We now have three hundred and some pages.
Three hundred sixty-three.
Three hundred.
But who's counting?
Um, is there any way of streamlining, there's some of these pages, there's nothing of information on them, it's just that they've been scanned in. And, you know, I think page one eighty-seven stuck out in my mind, that there's nothing on it. Uh, yeah, one eighty-six, one eighty-seven.
Chairman Masachi, there is no one in the lobby, and there's no one with a hand raised online.
Okay, then I'll, as soon as I can figure out how to get to the.
Trying to get rid of the date? No, no, no.
No, I mean, we're gonna go into a closed meeting, so I just need to get to.
If there's a way of streamlining our information given to us, it would be appreciated.
Well, again, just to let you know, the reason we have three hundred sixty-three pages is one of the committees got the draft, um, accounting report, which is a hundred and forty pages.
Yeah.
So we got it as part of the presentation, and then we also got it because it was a attachment to one or the other, so.
Yeah, that's a need being attached.
Yeah, we, we need one copy, and that's, see, the summary as far as policy-related.
But it's not easier just to hit, say, you know, cut, paste, and then, you're right.
It's easier for me to lay it over, too.
So, yeah, no, I mean, I just think that, you know, you just, you, you give a summary of the, like, the minutes of the, you know, the meet, the committee meeting, say that draft of the audit was reviewed, and, you know, we're gonna get the full draft of the board meeting. I don't think we need the, all of the details of the committee report.
Yeah.
Um, when it's duplicated in the, in the packet.
It's, it's just overwhelming, you can't, you can't spend the whole evening, I, I couldn't get through it.
Oh, yes, you can.
I'm a slow reader, I'm sorry.
No, it's.
Numbers, numbers are hard, I have to go through all these digits.
Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, if that, I will go ahead and, um, talk to you about having a closed meeting. Uh, first of all, uh, being resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended, the act, to discuss the following matter, which is specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. One, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two dot two dash three seven, one one dot A dot one of the act. May I have a motion?
No move.
A second?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Vice Chairman Albert?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Arrington?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernasti?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Chairman Masachi?
Aye. All right, we'll do our usual, just a few minutes while we coordinate everything, reminding you that you are not to discuss any NRHA business. Take about a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Mr. Dillard, we will call you back on a secure line.
Okay, you want me to hang up this one, Delphine?
Yes, please.
You got, you got.
Yeah, we gotta test, because that's in my case, I broke it up, Tim. Uh, buddy gave me this, and I was coming in to brag on it.
Are you with the cameras on?
Are we set? I can, okay. All right, um, have a resolution certifying a closed session, whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two dot two dash three seven, one two dot D of the nineteen fifty code of Virginia, as amended, requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, upon motion duly made and seconded, being resolved that the authority hereby certifies that, to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, one, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
No move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Carnes?
Vice Chairman Albert?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Arrington?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dillard?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain, uh, Chairman Masachi?
Aye. All right, if we.
Just abstain?
Show abstain, yes. Uh, we now have the resolution, which is on page one hundred and twenty of your packet. And I'll ask, uh, Mr. Jackson to tell us about it.
Uh, with this resolution, we're asking to, uh, increase the, the legal services contract.
I'm gonna give you a, okay.
Okay. Uh, with this resolution, we're asking the board to approve a resolution to increase the, the current legal services contract, which is currently at two point two-five million dollars to four hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had the. We had the, uh, original, the, the original legal services contract back in July was established to be $750,000. In December, we came back for a change order, um, in the amount of 1.5 million, which brought the total legal services contract up to 2.25 million. And now we're asking for a change order, which would be change order number two, in the amount of 1.75 million, which would make the total legal services contract $4 million. This is primarily the result of the ongoing litigation, St. Paul's litigation. Uh, in terms of, of, uh, the actual, uh, cost, the primary costs is being borne by outside counsel, Reno, Kavanaugh, about 83% of the, of expenses that we would spend, that thus far has gone to Reno, Kavanaugh, and only 70% has gone to Delphine Carnes, uh, law group. And they, they do provide those, also the legal representation in this law group. But anyway, in order for us to continue to fund the ongoing litigation, that will take us not only through this fiscal year, which ends in June 30th, but we anticipate that it'll hopefully take us through the next fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 2022. So that's why we're asking for the 1.75 million. If it goes at the rate that it is, about $170,000 a month, we think that'll at least take us through the, the following fiscal.
Okay. Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
A second? Ms. Carnes?
Vice Chairman Albert?
I, uh, can I provide a comment with my vote? Uh, just, I do, I go, yea, or nay?
We, we can have, with the chair's non-permission, you may.
Yeah. I'm gonna, uh, just in the interest of, uh, supporting the effort, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna vote aye, but, uh, I, I think we need to kind of probe this budget a little deeper. Uh, so, but for the sake of this effort, I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington?
I'm sorry, I, 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 I want to say aye, but I don't really want to say aye. So what do I do? Um.
Flip a coin. Not just tease.
Um, I'm not really in agreement to do it. I was just letting you know, I don't really agree doing this, but I'm.
A similar comment to Mr. Albert's?
Yeah.
Was, was an aye, with concerns about the future?
Rent was relevant.
Yeah. Okay, no good.
Commissioner Gresham?
I'm okay.
Aye.
Don't like it, but I'm okay.
Commissioner Furrier?
I think everyone else, I think we have no choice, I don't see the plan B, so I.
Commissioner Dillard?
Well, it still shows him on there. Okay.
I don't know what happened. Hello, will you state your name after the tone? And go across here, I connect you. Delphine Carnes? The key is on the line?
That's where, I mean, it looks like. I mean, there's a one there.
Yes, but he can't hear you, he can only hear you.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you now. I'm, I'm not sure what happened, we lost you for a minute. We're proceeding through the vote. Okay, um, so we're, we're proceeding, I was calling the role. Commissioner Albert voted aye, but wants, um, has reservations and wants a further discussion about the budget for this. Commissioner Arrington voted aye, um, with some concerns as well. Commissioner Gresham voted aye. Commissioner Furrier voted aye. And I was just, uh, about to call your name for the vote on the resolution. So Commissioner Dillard?
Okay. Yeah, I'm on the same.
Abstained. Chairman Masaccio?
Aye.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll ask the public, again, if there's anyone wishing to speak, dial star nine to raise your hand, and we'll be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. If you are called upon, please state your name and address. Miss Moore, is anyone?
There are no callers on the line.
All right. Final comments, commissioners? If not, I will call the March Commissioners' Meeting to a close. Thank you very much.